It's we're raising money.
This is awesome.
Oh, yeah. So what do you want me to do?
I want you to have a ticket.
How much?
A thousand.
You look good. Anybody here? Okay, let's call the meeting to order.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
Present.
Man.
I'm present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
Present.
Mayor, Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are you telling me we don't have anybody to do the invocation twice in a row?
We have Jeremy Johnson here.
Who?
Jeremy?
Jeremy's here? Come on down. If you would, please. Thank you. You know, we spent an absolute fortune to be able to do this in legal fees.
Well, I will make the best of that fortune. So if you would stand with me and bow your heads, we'll ask the Lord's blessing today. Lord, we are grateful for our city that cares about its people. We are grateful for all of these law enforcement officers that we see here today. Would you bless them and protect them? Would you continue to give this council wisdom as they look to how best to serve the people of this city? May your hand of protection be over this meeting and may it be done for your glory. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, please rise, place your hand over your heart, and repeat with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for whose stance one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mitch, would you sing the Star Spangled Banner for me?
Here?
Yeah, you can flip it around and face the crowd. Just pull the mic down.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Oh, the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? Oh, the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Why don't the deputies come down?
This was Marvin's idea, and I told him you all wouldn't fit, but let's go ahead and give it a try. You see, Marvin?
Told you they'd fit.
Mitch, you are loved. That's truly wonderful. We're here to honor Mitch Speed, James Speed, who has the best voice in the Antelope Valley. But... And in a moment, I'm going to read a little bit about Mitch. But before I do, I thought I would add my own words to it. You know, to me, the epitome of a police officer is the police officer that avoids having to arrest people, that creates situations where they don't commit crimes, that when he arrives on the scene, people behave because they want to behave. And we've got a lot of those officers in the Lancaster station. But one who epitomizes that, who is really the penultimate of that, is Mitch. And for that and many other reasons, we are going to award Mitch something we have never given a police officer. Oh, we gave it to the sheriff, if that's right. We gave it to the sheriff. And we're a little worried about giving it to the next one. I didn't say that. But we have never given it to a deputy until now. And that is an indication of just how high our esteem is for you. We don't give these out lightly. It's the highest award we can give. And on behalf of the City of Lancaster, I'm going to give it to you in a minute. But first, I want to read a little bit about you. Mitch lived in New Hall until moving to Roseman in the second grade. Now, he achieved all of this growing up in Roseman. That is an accomplishment. He has a love of sports and was actively involved in football, track, and basketball. Mitch attended Antelope Valley College and worked in construction before joining the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, graduating from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department Class Number 331 in 2002. He spent the majority of his career assigned to the Lancaster station and proudly served as a patrol deputy until being selected to work on the burglary suppression team. That burglary suppression team is probably the most successful team like it in the entire country. As soon as they started, burglaries just dropped like a stone. And you were one of the founding people in that, I believe. In 2012, Mitch was promoted to the rank of detective and has continued serving the community of Lancaster while working as an investigator for the robbery suppression team and the assault team. Mitch is very active in his community, continues to have a deep love of sports, and is actively involved in his church and community events. Above all of Mitch's accomplishments, the most important thing in his life is his most valued asset are his wife, son, and family. Most importantly, with all the challenges facing law enforcement today, Mitch represents the best of law enforcement in terms of respect for citizens, respect for his community, and a commitment to exemplary service above all else. Mitch, on behalf of the City of Lancaster, we would like to give you the key to the city. Now, you have the option of saying something or not saying something. Because oftentimes, I don't want to say something when they give it to me, so I'm going to give it to you. Let you decide.
First and foremost, I want to say thank you to everybody and my partners here. There's a lot going on right now. I got diagnosed a while ago with stage four cancer, but everybody has shown love towards me and my family that is like crazy. I knew I was loved. I knew I was cared about. But you guys have absolutely blown me out of the water. Appreciate this. You know, I've lived here pretty much my whole life, and I'm going to stay here. This is where I want to work. I want to work home, just like most of these guys and girls here. Sheriff's Department's taking a lot of guff in the press right now, but these are good men and these are good women that sacrifice their lives every single day to help people. And a lot of times, those are people that don't really care for them. So I just want you to understand that. I'm not a perfect guy, but I try to live my life right. Through all this, with everything going on with me and my family, we stand on our faith. I was raised by a woman that raised me and my brother as a single woman. No child support, no government assistance. We moved out to Roseman. She raised us out there, and she did it all. She showed me what faith is about. She showed me believing in God. I don't know if we're supposed to talk about God anymore, but I'm going to talk about God because I can't talk. I can't stand up here and talk about my life without talking about God. And I stand firmly on my faith. Whatever goes on with this whole thing with my cancer, it's all in God's hands. It's out of my hands. I'm not stressed about it. I want to show my son and my family and my partners and my nieces and nephews what standing on faith means. And that means putting it in God's hands and letting it go. So very much appreciate this. Appreciate all the love that everybody's showing towards my family. And thank you very much. I'm home.
Mitch, Mitch, this is America's Christian city, and we are all praying for you.
You have to take a bunch to make me up there? No, it's me.
It'll just take a couple minutes.
What?
It's a key to the city.
Yeah, it's cool. We haven't had this many people since Walmart.
That's a better group.
You and Ron are going to help me do this, right?
I think so.
If I was them, I would hope somebody was thinking about doing something crazy. This is the place to get me out tonight.
Where's Ron at?
He's right here.
Because they didn't even give me anything to read.
For what?
For the kids charities? No, you're just going to introduce Yvette and Ron.
Keep squeezing, keep squeezing. I think you might be able to get everybody in here.
I'm just trying to see where you go.
We're good.
And then I go back up there? Or you want me to stay here? You know, we brought you all here so you would start learning how to volunteer.
Let's let it clear out.
Yvette, bring the rest of them in.
We're all in.
I know, but bring them in so they're all on camera.
See, Marvin's like your grandmother. He's got to set the shot. Okay, we ready? Okay, everybody ready? I mean, this is a big deal. This is when they hand out the cash. I mean, very rarely does that happen in the world when they hand out the cash. And so tonight, from kids charities to local charities, Ron, Yvette, and Imar will be giving huge checks.
Well, first of all, Mayor, thank you very much, Vice Mayor, City Council. A special thank to the staff, both with the city, at the park, a special to my buddy Art Ledesma who came, who complained about the food 17 years ago, and he's been doing it ever since. One more year, two more years? Well, he says that every year. But it's such an honor to have this city because at year 20, we were going to say goodbye, and now we're handing out the money at year 22. But this helps so many kids in Antelope Valley. And tonight, we're going to give away about $165,000 here. There's others' checks we've already given out. A total of $180,000, probably plus. There will be a little more that's coming in. So that gives us about $40,000 more than last year. So it's a big difference to the charities, and we thank you. And I know you're busy, so we will get to it.
Okay, and I just wanted to take a quick moment to just thank our board real quick. Ronnie, Imar, Lee Egstrom, George Passantino, Marvin, Chris, Danny, Basil, Wendy Williams, Tom Ward, Raj, Molly, and John Clandry for, you know, helping us make Kids Charities what it is. But primarily, I want to acknowledge these people that are standing behind me and point out that these are the folks who do the hard work. We just do an event each year, whoop-de-doo. They're the ones who daily deal with cleaning up vomit, you know, pulling out money from their own checkbooks and helping out their clients. They're the ones who deal with kids who are out of control, who deal with law enforcement. They deal with all those very difficult tasks on a day-to-day basis, and we don't have to do that. So we're blessed and grateful that we're able to come together, bring the community, all of you together, all our sponsors, all these great people, to raise these monies that go towards these wonderful charities who do incredible work in our community for these kids who so desperately need it. So we're ready to give away the checks.
We're over our three minutes, by the way.
Three.
Okay. Thunder and a Lot Charities, AB Guild Children's Hospital, $7,000. AB Partners have helped, $2,000. AB Saddle Up Therapeutic Writing, $9,000. AB Saving Grace, $5,000. Saddle up, honey?
I'm sorry?
Saddle up.
Yes. What about... Okay, hold on. Just keep reading.
Okay. I just read them. AB Saving Grace, $5,000. Boys and Girls Club of the Antelope Valley, $2,000. Care Net, $10,000. Child Family Guidance Center, $8,000. Desert Christian Schools, $9,000. Desert Vineyard School Scholarships, $9,000. Grace Resources, $6,000. Jacob Hepner Foundation, $4,000. Lancaster Kiwanis Youth Scholarship, $6,000. Palmdale Lions Club, Eye Care Program, $10,000. Royal Kids Camp, $10,000. Salvation Army Music Program, $3,000. Sounder Foundation, $4,000. Valley Oasis Shelter, $8,000. And now, the Neighbor Impact Homes. A total of $40,000 given out to the AB Church, $5,000. AB Dream Center, $5,000. Central Christian, $5,000. Grace Chapel, $10,000. Crosswinds Church, $5,000. Life Church, $5,000. And Living Stone Cathedral of Worship, $5,000. The good part about this is all this money goes to help our local kids. So we thank you. We're delighted. Thank you, Mayor Paris. Marvin didn't make a joke about my hair, so I'll tell you. I sold it in March for $3,000. I let somebody shave my head. But there's also the sheriff explorers, the highway explorers, some different men's groups that help us, that we take care of. So this really goes out to their community. It really makes our community a better place. So we thank you, and we couldn't thank Lancaster City more.
All right, get a picture?
Picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
How are you?
He's good at that. He's real good.
Forty grand. That's huge. But I kept telling them, they only have three minutes. If you don't put Ron on the chain...
Yeah, he went through that. He said that fast. I was like, I thought I heard it.
He said we got three minutes. How am I going to do this?
That's amazing.
So that's why they kept saying we're past our three minutes.
Okay, we good to go? Tim Fuller is going to give us a report on the fair. So, Tim, how's the work group for... What's it called?
The work group for?
You know, when you get people to get along, what's that called? Team building, yeah. How's the team building workshop with the administration and the Board of Directors going?
The team building workshop? Well, I think actually the kickoff is taking place with the Joint Powers Authority one day during the fair.
Well, that's wonderful.
So, yeah, looking towards the development of a new vision statement. I think it's always good to look at where we are and where it is you want to go. So just... I think it's always good to look at where we are and where it is you want to go. So just in the process of getting that started right now.
Handled that well, didn't he?
Anyway, I really appreciate having the opportunity here to give you an update on the Antelope Valley Fair. A fair's been an annual event that's been held here in the city of Lancaster since 1938, beginning on Avenue I in Lancaster, and continued there as the home of the fair up until September of 2003, when it moved to its new headquarters where we're located now, on Avenue H, just east of the 14 freeway. And today, we have a 135-acre facility. It serves as a year-round fairgrounds, event, and catering center. We have the Miller Lite Arena there that will seat 5,400 people in the grandstands, and additional 3,200 people on the tractor and concert. So it's a full-service facility. We can host events of up, over 1,000 people seated inside. Outdoor and arena events, weddings, quinceañeras, company parties and celebrations, meeting of all sizes, concerts, dances, shows, and similar things. There's also the watch and wager facility on the fairgrounds, which features the off-track wagering. And that's year-round in our turf club. Some of the examples, the events that we hold throughout the year include Bingo every Thursday night, which I believe your mother goes to, Mayor, and the turf club. Home show in April, bridal show.
Are you saying you take my mother's money?
So far, I think she's been taking ours. Yeah, we're looking at some point to be able to win that back, but I think that it's, the balance is pretty much on the other side at this time. We hosted the Johnson Smooth Jazz Festival in June, the Barn Bash as well. The Fourth of July, we join forces with the city of Lancaster and do the Professional Bull Riders Touring Division and Fireworks Extravaganza, sponsored by the city of Lancaster and the Showdown Rodeo. We just completed an Elektra Night Run and Glow Party in July. And we're gonna be hosting the Ram, PRCA California Circuit Finals in October, which is a really big deal. It's the largest rodeo event in the state of California, hosted here at our fairgrounds. We're new this year, gonna be having a Holiday Craft Fair, and then we have our old-timers barbecue sort of completing our year. And those are the events that are put on by the fair, or that we are at least part hosting those events. There's many others where we serve as a rental facility. A fairground's also used to conduct training of emergency responders, been used as a homeless shelter, emergency shelter, particularly during very hot days or very cold nights. An evacuation center, and most recently, that was activated during the sand fire when the fairgrounds hosted over 400 large animals. So very versatile facility, really one of the jewels, in my opinion, of the Antelope Valley. But we are best known for the Antelope Valley Fair, and that's gonna be coming up. Our 78th Annual Antelope Valley Fair and Alfalfa Festival from August 19th through the 28th, with a theme this year of Who Let the Kids Out? Kicks off with the Palmdale Auto Mall Concert Series on Friday, August 19th. Gates open at 4 o'clock PM, free parking and admission from 4:00 to 5:00 on that day. And we start that night with Trace Adkins and Brandy Clark, a nice country band. On Saturday, it's Pat Menatar and Neil Geraldo with John Waite. Sunday, Calibre Cinquenta and Larry Hernandez. Monday, Foreigner and Don Felder. Tuesday, Hunter Hayes and Cam, another country event. And then the end of that concert series is with Michael Frant, Ian Spearhead, joined by Iration. The rest of the fair, then, we start the Rally Kia Event Series, and that's Thursday, August 25th through Sunday, August 28th, to close. On Thursday, it's a big day for us, because we start in the morning with a Kiwanis Junior Livestock Auction, which is held in the RX Parish Show Arena, and that's from 9:00 in the morning till approximately 5:00. And that's followed by the Figure Eight Races, sponsored by Cullen Insurance. That night is also Military Appreciation Night, and it's a free admission to active and retired military with ID. We're gonna have a tribute to all of our branches of military during the Figure Eight Show. When people walk in the gate, they're gonna be greeted on a red carpet. We try to honor all of our military, active and retired that night. Something new this year is the Mark Wensander Johnson Foundation Grand Oasis turns into our version of the USO. So we're gonna have dancing and band open to the public, military welcome. And it's something new that we're doing this year to honor our military. On Friday night, it's monster trucks figuring, featuring Bigfoot, which is the first time he's coming in the Antelope Valley, or that truck, I should say, not the Sasquatch, but the truck. And then Saturday, the 27th, the Rural Olympics and Fireworks Show, which is sponsored by Learn for Life. And then we finally end up on Sunday, on the 28th, with the Demolition Derby. Every year, we try to do something different, something, you know, a little different, and get people out and see something new at the fairgrounds, and this year is no exception. We have a few hotspots I'd just like to highlight for you. There's now, new this year, the Berkshire Hathaway Home Services Truck Realty Stampede Saloon. That's a mouthful. And that's located on the west side of the Miller Lite grandstands. And that's available for rental and private parties, and it's at the west end of the grandstands. It's got a private bar seating for concerts and arena events. And we have several companies that are gonna be renting it this year and having a place for their people to be able to hang out. We unveiled La Plaza last year, which is a tip of our hat to our Hispanic community. We started that project, learned a lot from the experience. This year, it's gonna be enhanced, and we're gonna be having a nightly discotheque from 9:00 till close every night there, sponsored by Caboina 96.1. And the popular radio personality Don Cheto, who's a really big name, is gonna be there on August 28th, sponsored by Sprint. So we're looking forward to that. A lot of people coming out. New this year, the HW Hunter Corral, which features nightly tailgate parties, ticket giveaways, live entertainment, line dancing, sponsored by Bex, and competitions, including the return of the Mr. Whiskerino Contest. So, Mayor Paris, we expect you to come out, compete in the best beard contest. So it's a little, a little different than the Mr. Whiskerino of time past, where people had to shave completely and come out. We do have that component. But the park that seems to be more popular is there's gonna be prizes for best beard and best mustache. So we're looking forward to that as well. There's gonna be new this year, Club Heat 100.9. It's a newly paved area near the Thrill Zone Carnival, and that's gonna be with dancing, giveaways, music every night. Also, the Craft Beer Garden, which is, features Kinetic, Bravery, Lucky Luke, and Transplants Beering Companies. Area set aside for them and a place to showcase our local breweries. And then finally, the Corona Cantina, where we're gonna have our tribute bands, including tributes to Bon Jovi, Beatles, Willie Nelson, Bad Company, Heavy Metal Mariachi, ZZ Top, Michael Tina Aretha, and a lot more. So there's a lot to do at the fair this year. And of course, we have the award-winning Ray Kemick Show, or RCS, coming back, and they provide world-class rides and games. So with the, with everything else that's going on the fair, we're looking forward to really an exciting year. I'd like to tell you that there's pre-sale tickets that are available now. You can get them at Vons, Viartas, Albertson's, and there's also a kiosk in the Antelope Valley Mall and select businesses throughout Lancaster and Palmdale, displaying signs that the tickets are available there. So from now through August 18th, you can get an admission ticket for $7. Regular price is $11. And for a junior age of six to eight, it's $8. And all during the fair, children under six are free with paid adult admission. The Carnival wristbands, again, a pre-sale up until the fair starts, are going to be $20, and they're $35 during the fair. So when you buy your pre-sale tickets, you also get a coupon book, a distributed form. There's over 20, or there are exactly 20 offers in there for buy one, get one free. So if you buy one of the food items that's in there, you get the same thing at no cost. So everything from free admission, on the opening day, from 4:00 to 5:00, you can come. You can get parking for free, come in for free with a coupon book for buy here, buy one, get one free. Go into the grandstands and watch a concert as part of your admission. It really is and can be very affordable, and we take pride in it being also a very safe environment. We have tremendous support from the city of Lancaster, from the Sheriff's Department, and there's a really wide presence of security. People that are there to have fun, and we do everything to make sure that that's what they have, is fun while they're at the fair. Fair is open from 4:00 PM to midnight during weekdays, 2:00 PM to midnight on Saturdays and Sundays. And for tickets to all events, there's too much to talk about tonight. I gave you a handout as well. You can take a look at that at your leisure. But for all their events, complete schedules, special days, discounts, other than the ones that I've mentioned, they're all available on avfair.com. So we're looking forward to seeing you at the fair. Any questions?
Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay, now we have the Los Angeles County Airshow with Al Hoffman and Rhonda Perez.
All right, so we're gonna talk about terrific support. So a little over three years ago, a group of folks here in the Antelope Valley got together and decided, hey, let's have an airshow. After all, the Antelope Valley's really all about aerospace heritage, history, current day projects and products going on, Plant 42, Edwards Air Force Base, NASA Armstrong. We used to have airshows at Edwards Air Force Base, but we haven't had any since 2010. So we decided we're gonna make an effort to try to put on an airshow using Fox Field. Well, we certainly exceeded our initial expectations. Our first airshow in 2014, we had the Blue Angels. The following year, we had the Thunderbirds from the Air Force come in. This year, this March, we had the Blue Angels return. We have the Thunderbirds committed to returning again in March of 2017. The airshow's certainly grown and evolved. It's actually turning into a world-class event. We have a STEM exposition, which is the largest STEM exposition of any airshow in the United States. So great, great little one-up thing for Lancaster and the rest of the Antelope Valley there. So I want to talk about Lancaster. Lancaster's been a terrific, super terrific partner to the Los Angeles County Airshow Incorporated. Without the city's support, whether it be parking assistance, working with the Sheriff's Department, whoever, we would not have enjoyed the success and the growth that we've experienced with this airshow, and that we're gonna continue to experience. I have here some other members of the board. We already mentioned Rhonda. We all know Rhonda's part of our board and very integral part of our board. We have Mike Belzel here, Donita Nguyen, Phyllis Fregoso, I'll come to you in a minute, and David Viera. Now, the man here in the blue is John Ferrigione. John is our newly selected, appointed airshow executive. We decided to go local with an airshow executive, because we intend to have a year-round presence in the community, not just throw a weekend event. So we want to get more involved with alike, certain community events, certain community organizations, and certainly the school systems in the Antelope Valley. Because one of the things we're all about is inspiring and educating the youth, so they pursue educations right here or even beyond in the Antelope Valley, and certainly come back to work here in some of our high-tech businesses. So without further ado, what we have from the Board of Directors and our volunteer workforce, which is integral, because we have about 200 volunteers from the community that assist us in putting on the airshow. And without them, also, we cannot do it. So we have a little thank you gift for the city of Lancaster here to say, really, thank you for your support and looking forward to your support here in the future. So the first thing is a lithograph that was put together by the Blue Angels.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Couldn't we get the Thunderbirds and the Blue Angels to both come and then fight?
I won't say impossible, but I'll say highly improbable.
Just, just a suggestion. Came into my head.
Yeah, okay. That'd be a good one. Maybe, maybe we could do it with some other jet team. Maybe the Canadian Snowbirds come down and fight the Thunderbirds. The schedules are pretty packed, pretty tight for the Thunderbirds and the Blue Angels. But I, we all feel very lucky and very fortunate that they each decided they wanted to come back repeatedly. And a lot of that has to do with the hospitality and the support that they've received throughout the community here. I think if you were able to talk to the Blues or the Thunderbirds, they'll tell you this is actually a great place to come and perform. So we do have this print lithograph here, this made up from the Blue Angels to the city of Lancaster and assigned by the Flight Demonstration Team, the Blue Angels. And besides it, we have, can you hold this a minute? We have the, we've been making commemorative books. A couple of our photographers are really sharp here. This is a great book. More will be available, but we're gonna present this to you tonight. This is just absolutely fantastic photography. We also intend to distribute this book to our major sponsors. We're gonna put one in each library. We're gonna make sure that this book is available anyplace that the folks in the community have access to it, can see it, the youth in the community and that kind of stuff. So these are for the city of Lancaster, and if you, the mayor, or the vice mayor, or all the council members want to come on down, we'll gladly present them to you. So again, thank you so very much for your support. We really do appreciate it.
Too good of a day. It's too good of a day. Okay, now we can get to the meeting, although actually, I prefer to adjourn and go home. It was all good. City manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Trying to remember, did I miss last week or did I miss the week before?
No, no, you didn't miss.
You were, you were here last meeting. Your wife was gone.
Your wife was gone.
That's right. Let's vote. Approved unanimously. Consent calendar, anything to be removed? Anything to be pulled? Ignore it.
We need to pull CC6.
Okay, let's pull CC6.
I need to recuse myself, because I live nearby. Should I do now?
Get out of here.
I'll make a motion that we approve CC6.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous with one abstention. It was tough doing it without you, Raj, but we struggled through. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move the consent calendar is currently comprised.
Second it. Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, public hearing item one. We'll hear from, do we have any cards?
Rex, we'll need to declare to open.
Open the public hearing, please.
I have to open the public.
Thank you.
Why does that make sense? Never mind.
Formality.
All right. Are we waving the staff report or are we going forward?
Let's wave it.
Just wave it.
Wave it? Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve PH1.
We gotta close. We have to close.
Do we have, do we have any comments then? We don't have any comments? We need to close the public hearing, and then we can vote.
Then we can vote.
All right.
Just a formality.
Let's close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Shouldn't I have a little door or something?
I'll move we adopt resolution number.
So for this evening, Lee and I will just give you a very brief overview of what it encompasses and what the potential implications are. In part, Prop 57 makes significant changes to current laws that determine when convicted felons are eligible for parole. It will amend the state constitution to provide that a person convicted of a nonviolent felony will be eligible for parole after serving the term of his or her primary offense. There are two huge problems with this. First, it expressly excludes serving any time that has been added by enhancements that are imposed for various reasons, including having been convicted of more than one offense, using a gun during the commission of the crime, participating in criminal gang activity. There are also enhancements based on drug-related offenses, based on the quantity of drugs at issue. For example, manufacturing a pound of methamphetamine carries a three-year enhancement. Manufacturing 44 pounds or more of methamphetamine carries a 15-year enhancement. A convicted felon will be eligible for parole before any time is served for these or any other enhancements. And more frighteningly, Prop 57 also excludes any additional time imposed as a result of prior convictions, which means that a career criminal previously convicted of violent crimes will be eligible for parole for a nonviolent felony in the same amount of time as a first-time offender. Additionally, currently only about 23 felonies are specifically defined in the penal code as being violent. Prop 57 does not define what nonviolent means, so presumably, the other 600-plus felonies that are identified in the penal code would by default be considered nonviolent. And you'd be shocked to learn what some of these are that are not considered, not defined as violent currently. Assault with a deadly weapon on a peace officer, rape of an unconscious person, human trafficking involving a minor for sex acts, hate crimes, solicitation to commit murder. So Prop 57 essentially kills important provisions of the Three Strikes Law, the Victims' Bill of Rights, and other measures passed by the voters. In addition to the parole eligibility, Prop 57 makes some other changes. It would repeal existing law that requires certain offenses committed by juveniles 14 and older must be filed in adult court, and some other provisions related to juvenile justice. It additionally shifts responsibility from the state legislature to the Department of Corrections for establishing when good behavior credits are awarded that reduce the actual time an inmate serves in prison. So that's just a brief overview of what the proposition entails, and I'm going to let Lee get into some of the details.
And I think as we've talked about in the past, and we've had numerous presentations and discussions based on California's incarceration rates for the last 20 years and some of the things that have been acted. But since the implementation of AB 109, which was the last realignment act in 2011, over 45,000 convicted felons who were prior serving time in state prison are now been released down to supervision by the Department of Probation. Of that number, since the inception of AB 109, currently, right now, there's over 11,000 individuals that are out there under the supervision under the last realignment act. 22% of them, right now, they don't even know where they are. So taking that down from the state level, the release of those inmates who typically would have been incarcerated for a period of time now are in the street in our communities. And you can see over across the board, throughout the state, that crime rates are creeping up again as it relates to that. I think the biggest scary thing issue here, and that's why I think it's important for the District Attorney's Office to come forward and explain it, because it's a very complicated sentencing method that occurs with enhancements, so based on priors, based on the activity they were involved in. Some other ones that Jocelyn didn't mention is like shooting at an inhabited dwelling, throwing acid on someone, detonating an explosive device with the intent to injure. Those things are considered serious felonies and not violent felonies under this act, if you look at the definition of what is violent. So what is scary about this is that someone who typically would have had these enhancements based on prior history or the methodology they used to commit the crime, or all those things that currently exist, would only be considered for parole based on the base charge, whatever term that was in the penal code. So for example, if the base charge is five years, they'll automatically get a 50% reduction in sentencing on the day it's enacted, and then the Department of Corrections will make it a determination after that point, what is appropriate based on parole eligibility, based on good time, work time credit. So you can see where the significance is. And the other side of this effect of these, all these issues, nonrevocable parole, AB 109, Prop 47, our county jails are full. Our county jails now are housing typically people who would be incarcerated in state prison. So this is another avenue that, in my opinion, based on what they're doing, is that the state's taken another position to reduce the prison population. We're beyond the scope of what was required by the federal court, and it's basically monotero. It's for resource management. I think the big thing is, also as well, that I think needs to come out in the discussion, that's why we need to set aside some time for the District Attorney's Office to talk about the issues, is this mitigates the Victims' Bill of Rights, Marcy's Law, which was also an enhancement to the Victim Bill of Rights, that ensures that the courts and the law have to protect victims, okay? It designates it in the law. Californians Against Sexual Exploitation Act, Gang Violence and Juvenile Crime Prevention Act, and then obviously the Three Strikes enhancements. So, just with that, it's just a brief introduction of all the things that could be affected related to this proposition, and that we really believe strongly in working with our local District Attorney's Office and our judiciary, that it's important for us to get this message out to the public, because it's being presented in a way that's presented similar to what Prop 47 did, as though it's some type of Public Safety and Safe Schools Act, or some issue where it enhances public safety. Truthfully, it completely does the opposite. Any questions?
I'm having trouble understanding the handout. All right.
I don't have a copy in front of me, but I'm familiar with the one you're referring to.
Okay, but when it says it treats all these different things the same, does that mean if parole wants to let them out? I mean, the parole ward wants to let them out?
After they've served the term for the base offense, yes.
Okay. I'm just always concerned when we're not accurate in how we present our side. Oftentimes, because the other side presents it in a deceptive way, we fall prey to that and do it ourselves. Because when I read this, it sounds like what we're saying is that these people are all going to be released regardless of the enhancements. But what it actually says is that with the enhancement, they could still be released early. You see the difference? I mean, it's not like their full sentence has been reduced. It's still under the control and authority of someone else, right?
No.
Okay, explain it to me.
Okay, what that is, is that there's enhancements. So let's say someone receives an initial charge for an, in front of me, and this is why it's important for the District Attorneys to talk about this, because of the different things that are enhancements out there. So if they're a prior ex-convict, if they used a gun, the commission, they're a gang member, all those things can add years to their initial sentence. But they will only receive a sentence based on the initial charge when consideration for parole. So you're right in the sense that it doesn't manage it at adjudication, but what it does is parole will work backwards from that initial base charge, so for consideration.
If they don't get parole, they'll serve the whole sentence, right?
Well, I guess conceptually it could be, but the other thing about this as well is that makes everyone that's currently incarcerated eligible based on this rule, too. So there are some issues with that. So.
I'm voting against the proposition. I don't like the proposition. But I think it's important that we stay above, that we're cut above the other side of these things.
I totally agree. And I think that's why it'd be important for have the District Attorneys themselves, who could talk about and explain it in terms that, for everyone to understand, how that works as far as add charges and enhancements, and then where it works backwards from there.
This is among some preliminary materials that we were able to obtain from the group working with the District Attorneys Association. So I don't know who's drafting these things, obviously. They're building it up for drama. I firmly believe that both District Attorney Totten and any other DAs who may, you know, wish to appear, you may ask to attend, would be much better suited.
It just concerns me that when both sides are being deceptive, people are left with the title on the ballot, which is also deceptive. You know, it concerns me, is all. Okay? Tell Mr., is it Totten?
Totten.
That I'm concerned. Thank you.
Mr. Durico, you stated that you're getting the message out to the community. What is your plan to do so?
Well, again, I plan to talk to the Criminal Justice Commission. Also, whatever literature's put out on the opposition side, of course, we will present from both sides to the council, and then I believe it's what you believe is appropriate as a council, and then based on the position that you have on it as a group, okay? And however you'd like to manage that. I believe it's very important just from making the public as informed as possible as it relates to these things, and I think prior, based on some of the deception that took place with the earlier propositions, that the public was not presented with the true issues that were related to that. And I believe that's what's important here. And I think the other part of this thing, just personally, is there's a certain amount of things that the governor's office has used with funding and things to push this proposition forward on his behalf, because it is his, as well, the other side has to come up with funding to develop public outreach for opposition. So that's an interesting phenomenon that's taking place in this particular proposition.
If I may, we would ask for direction from the council at some future date, because at this point, we're presenting information to Criminal Justice and to council. If the council wishes us to go out and take a position and stuff within the law, we absolutely would.
I guess my next question would be then, at what point in time do you think that you would come back to council? I would like a little bit more clarity on this particular proposition.
Well, it needs to be sooner rather than later, because before you know it, November's going to be here.
Exactly.
Where does Jackie Lacy side?
That's an ongoing discussion right now. I mean.
DA's office is here.
I believe they can't take a position on that unless it's a personal perspective at this time. That will come from their elected official, which would be Jackie.
What about Steve Cooley? Is he taking a position?
Haven't discussed it with him yet, but absolutely we'll have that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we send it to Criminal Justice, have them make a recommendation, cut through all the.
Yeah, just so long as we, the council, you know, does whatever we're going to do in the next two weeks. After that, I don't think it's going to be of much significance. Did the DA's office want to present something?
Not tonight, sir.
Mayor Paris, if, because you don't have a meeting in August, we won't be meeting until September, whatever the date is, what, 13? So based on the discussion here.
Can we default to Criminal Justice and let them make the decision for the council?
Yes, and we would ask the council to reaffirm that decision. We'll go with their recommendation for that period between their meeting and the council, if that's.
Can we use Outlook or something to get that message out?
Absolutely. We can use all the means that we have, all the platforms.
To provide education.
Criminal Justice is not meeting tomorrow.
When are they meeting?
Next month.
No, that's no good.
Can we vote on it now?
We, as a staff, I think that, I feel sufficiently comfortable, the direction of the council, based on discussion, that we will go out and aggressively and robustly educate the public until your next meeting.
Yeah, but I thought Totten wanted us to take a position.
Yeah, he definitely wants to come and provide information. And I think it's important, just based on what discussion, in fact, he's in Sacramento right now on this issue, having a discussion.
You can take a position on September 13th, but we can do the work between now and then.
Okay. Let's do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I got to close the magic door or anything?
No. No public hearing, but if you'd like to close the magic door, please feel free.
Careful.
This is getting so strange.
New business, item two. Status report on the Boulevard Association. Who's presenting? The Boulevard Association, great.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hi, how are you?
Paris and council. My name is Angela Riley. I'm representing Destination Lancaster and the Boulevard Association as Executive Director. With us today are members of our Boulevard Association Executive Board. We have Merle McKlennan, our president, who represents MDM Architects, and Connecticut Brewery. And we have, by my side, Valerie Orkut with Baya West Studio. So today, we want to give an update on drawing people downtown, which has been our efforts recently. The Boulevard Association and Destination Lancaster do have a shared goal of attracting visitors and residents to enjoy life in Lancaster. The Boulevard specifically is focusing its efforts on three overarching goals in an effort to draw more people downtown. Those, sorry, I haven't used this before, excuse me as I bring these up, are to create and maintain an attractive environment, to promote fun activities to draw people to the Boulevard, and thirdly, to build awareness and enhance overall image of the city of So some improvements have already been made in creating and maintaining an attractive environment downtown. Those improvements include the installation of the Big Belly Trash Compactors and attractive bike racks downtown, which have an artistic flair. And then our most exciting one, soon to be rolled out here in September, is our Ambassador Program. Really excited to have our new ambassadors on board. The Boulevard Association has contracted with Street Plus, who's going to provide friendly ambassadors downtown and be a visible presence on the Boulevard. The role of the ambassadors are to assist visitors and to encourage the homeless to seek appropriate services, and they'll advise panhandlers of their consequences, and they'll also offer assistance in public safety. So we're excited to have them on board. Public safety. We chose this company specifically because they have a presence in over 50 cities nationwide, including Chicago and New York. In Chicago specifically, they've made marked improvements, enhanced panhandling and vagrancy, and so they're of particular interest and attractive to us here downtown. Metrics are also very important for the Boulevard Association. Street Plus in particular arms their ambassadors with tablets and smartphones so that they can document their interactions with patrons on a regular basis, on an ongoing basis. And this data feeds directly into StatView, which is the company's online reporting tool, which allows them to make immediate updates and then to track the information on an immediate basis and provide reports, timely reports, to the Boulevard Association itself.
Say that again.
So Street Plus, they have smartphones and tablets, and all the data that they put into the system actually is sent into reports that we can access regularly. So it allows us to track activity downtown on a regular basis. So we know if there's, if they interacted with a patron and gave them directions somewhere, we'll know what happened, if they dealt with a vagrancy, if they dealt with homelessness, they'll be able to track that and send information in a report, and the report relatively quickly. So we'll have, they have the technology in place to provide accurate and timely reporting to the Boulevard Association, which is a tool we haven't had in the past and will be helpful in knowing how to move forward with the Boulevard.
So is it done with entry codes or?
I'm sorry?
Is it done with entry codes?
It is done with entry codes, it is.
Okay. And they take a picture of it when they do?
also offer assistance in public safety. So we're excited to have them on board. Public safety. We chose this company specifically because they have a presence in over 50 cities nationwide, including Chicago and New York. In Chicago specifically, they've made marked improvements, enhanced panhandling and vagrancy, and so they're of particular interest and attractive to us here downtown. Metrics are also very important for the Boulevard Association. Street Plus in particular arms their ambassadors with tablets and smartphones so that they can document their interactions with patrons on a regular basis, on an ongoing basis, and this data feeds directly into StatView, which is the company's online reporting tool, which allows them to make immediate updates and then to track the information on an immediate basis and provide reports, timely reports, to the Boulevard Association itself.
Say that again.
So Street Plus, they have smartphones and tablets, and all the data that they put into the system actually is sent into reports that we can access regularly. So it allows us to track activity downtown on a regular basis. So we know if there's, if they interacted with a patron and gave them directions somewhere, we'll know what happened, if they dealt with a vagrancy, if they dealt with homelessness, they'll be able to track that and send information and a report, and a report relatively quickly. So we'll have, they have the technology in place to provide accurate and timely reporting to the Boulevard Association, which is a tool we haven't had in the past, and will be helpful in knowing how to move forward with the Boulevard.
So is it done with entry codes, or...
I'm sorry?
Is it done with entry codes?
It is done with entry codes, it is.
Okay. And they take a picture of it when they do it?
They do, yes, they have the ability to do so as well.
I'm impressed.
Great to have that technology.
It's impressive.
At our fingertips as well. We're also looking to promote fun activities to draw people down to the Boulevard. Some may have seen the activity that's happening downtown with powwow, the murals that are happening. Credit to Moa and the Parks, Recreation and Arts Department for bringing the international venue to the Antelope Valley, great array of murals that are happening downtown. And that's just one event that attracts people to our downtown district. In addition to that, in a few weeks, we'll have 120 Days of Fun, that's the term affectionately provided by the Parks, Recreation and Arts Department, to the series of events that happen downtown, everything from Celebrate America to Streets of the Go-Kart Racing, the Boulevard Event, and then also the Magical Boulevard Christmas. So those events have been effective at drawing crowds downtown. And then new this year was the Bacon, Blues and Brews Event, the Boulevard Association's inaugural event. It drew thousands of folks downtown for what some argue is the best combination, bacon, beer and music downtown, so we're really excited to bring that event back next year. It was funny, we were walking downtown, and one of the patrons said that if you don't like bacon, then you're just simply wrong. So it was fun to hear, you know, the residents of Lancaster really love that event and make it their own, and there is an excitement out there to bring it back next year. So as we mentioned before, metrics are very important to the Boulevard Association moving forward. We've taken an effort to better judge the effectiveness of events downtown by the installation of a pedestrian counter, and the pedestrian counter is installed on Ehrlich, and the corner of Ehrlich and the Boulevard. It consistently, constantly monitors traffic downtown. As you can see by this particular graph here, the summary of last month, there were markedly more people downtown than the month prior to that. One unexpected phenomenon was the Pokemon Go craze, and so we found in its first week, there was over 100% increase in traffic downtown. So we wish we could take credit for creating that game, but what we did is we were very strategic about how the downtown was built, and it does house a number of historic attractions and as well as, you know, its community attraction, and that's what the game is based on. So there are several thousand more people visiting the Boulevard on a weekly basis because of that, and that's on top of an already, an upward trend in traffic downtown before that game's in place.
Is it reflected in grocery receipts?
It is. Both of our businesses are certainly taking advantage of Pokemon Go, and many have implemented coupons and specials for the participants downtown. And you'll go to downtown at 11:30 at night, and you'll still see traffic there. A number of businesses have made a decision to stay open later because of that increased traffic, so we're really excited by those numbers as well. We've also found that Thursdays count downtown. As you can see, Thursdays are definitely the most popular day downtown, followed by Fridays and Saturdays. Of course, we're familiar with the Boulevard Market happening on Thursdays in addition to the concert series, so we see that our community really enjoys both of those events and comes downtown to support it. Special events also count, as we can see by some figures, this graph here showing weekends in May. The three weekends in May have about similar attendance, but the weekend that was chosen for Bacon, Blues and Brews, May 14th, had significantly more visitors downtown as tracked by a pedestrian counter. There was particular effort made in choosing this day, which also shows the association and the partnership between Destination Lancaster and the Boulevard Association. That particular day is a day where there aren't sports tournaments in town, and the hotels were experiencing lower occupancy, so by hosting the event on this day, it really has enhanced both occupancy downtown and also attraction to the downtown. And so our third overarching goal is building awareness and enhancing the overall image for the city of Lancaster. We found that social media has been the most effective method in enhancing our image for the downtown. We can give the example of the powwow video that went out, the promo video that was sent less than a week ago. It's already reached more than 25,000 people in less than a week, and we expect that number to grow. Separate from that was the Bacon, Blues and Brews promo video, which has reached, which reached over 100,000 people in its time on the social media platform. So we're going to be using social media definitely to continue to enhance our events downtown. And then by my side is Valerie Orkut, who'll speak a little bit about her experience and some of the upcoming efforts we have downtown.
I just, I'm on the behalf of the Boulevard Association Board of Directors, and we are excited about all the new changes taking place on the Boulevard. The ambassador program is one of them. It'll be a real asset to the association and its members, and the many new events and promotions are working to attract more patrons downtown. And we'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for their ongoing support of the downtown Lancaster. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So Angela, you work for the city, not the downtown, right?
Yes, I am a City of Lancaster employee.
How much is your involvement with the downtown?
About 50% of my time is spent with the downtown efforts, another 50% with Destination Lancaster efforts.
Okay, is there somebody heading the downtown? Are you the head of it?
Yes, I represent the board as the executive director, and of course, our board members are actively involved in all the activities that happen downtown.
You should give her a raise. What's the matter with you?
They've given me this opportunity, which is really exciting, to see both organizations partner together to build kind of Lancaster and our downtown.
When we do those videos, can we give a prize, prizes to the people who have the most shares?
Actually, we do engage social media contests. In recent weeks, we've been offering Jet Hocks tickets for kind of shares on TripAdvisor and social media, so that people can give their personal experience downtown, so certainly that's something we've integrated and will continue to integrate moving forward.
If you're able to double occupancy by doing an event, why aren't we doing an event every week?
And that's certainly something that the Boulevard Association is exploring. I mean, we certainly see by the statistics that events definitely draw people downtown as do our Thursday Farmer's Market, as do a number of other kind of factors. So events are something that our board has certainly taken a look at. In upcoming months, we're looking at hosting an event at the park, a movie at the park through Street Food Cinema. They're well-known throughout Southern California for hosting movie nights in kind of open venues, so we're exploring one date this year and additional dates next year. They have a definite following on their social media and website, so we think it was a good fit for our downtown, and that'll draw people to the Boulevard both before and after the movie. So events are certainly effective and something that our board is actively looking at.
So do we have a package where we make the Boulevard available to, like, to an organization for a specific amount, so that the costs are absorbed?
That's certainly another idea that the Boulevard Board has been looking at. I mean, and my knowledge of the museum alone, having worked there in a supervisory position, that has been the most popular, one of the most popular venues for special events and weddings, and so that's true, the same is true for a number of businesses downtown. I think the restaurants can say that their, the restaurants are often looked at for catering opportunities and the like, and so packaging something for the downtown, maybe highlighting all of our special event facilities and catering opportunities is definitely something that we should consider in the near future, because it has become an increasingly popular location for residents.
Council has approved fees for that, and we do charge people a cost for that, for closing the Boulevard. We've had a number of rentals from closing one block to literally closing the whole street. We've tried to continue to drive those costs down, only charging what the actual real cost is to the city, and it's been effective. The east end of the Boulevard, for an example, several of those businesses got together to bring attention to their businesses, and they had a really good event, and it wasn't that expensive to close it down.
When they close it down, it's still open to the public, right?
It's still open to the public, it's closed to traffic. That's a good point, thank you. The Chamber of Commerce for the fair parade is going to extend that closure to also try to do a, some events and some exhibits after the parade to keep people downtown a little longer on the parade.
And the Boulevard Association is partnering in that effort with the fair specifically. There's an annual fair parade, and people come to the parade, enjoy it, and then have traditionally gone home, but the Boulevard Association agrees that that's an opportunity to keep people downtown. So the idea is after the actual parade, we offer some festivities that the public can take advantage of, and in participating in those festivities, hopefully they'll walk and shop the Boulevard businesses.
What's the vacancy rate down there now? How many storefronts are vacant?
That's decreasing on a daily basis. I don't have that exact figure, but it's certainly something I can figure out, find out.
But what I'd like to see is a trend, one way or the other, what it is, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're doing a fabulous job, thank you.
Thank you, I'm enjoying the opportunity.
Great.
Thank you.
So, I say received and filed, even though it was totally intangible and there's really nothing to file, right?
There's the PowerPoint.
It's been virtually received.
I just always like to keep, you know, track of, am I crazy, or...
Can we vote on that?
No.
There's a recommendation there.
All right, moving on. Council agenda item one. Any speaker cards?
None.
Should we vote? Is there a motion?
Just a real quick presentation, if we can.
Sure.
The Measure R, the new Measure R for the transportation funds. Me and Ken, Angela and myself are in different committees for the Transportation Board. We do go down to Santa Clarita, we go down to Glendale, we have the different NCTC meetings here, but they have failed to give us enough money to make up for the Measure R last time, that we did not receive enough money, and the money that we're receiving for our new Measure R is, in their own words, it's $1.8 million. So it's one point, or $1.8 billion. And the $1.8 billion goes into effect in the year 2063. So they're going to build the High Desert Corridor, they're using some money, a couple million, to buy some property for the High Desert Corridor, but they're going to build it in 2063. I think my son will be 74...
He better take his vitamins.
...at the time, so I would like us to take a position on this, that our area needs to take a stand, and these taxes cannot continue without us, so if we take a united stand against them and come out against this Measure R until we get our proper share, that we should vote no on it.
You know, I remember Measure R, and how totally, how do you say, screwed over in public? You can't.
Inequitably treated.
Inequitably treated. You know, I think instead of just saying we oppose it, I really would like to use city resources, meaning Outlook, the website, all of that stuff, to educate the voters as to why every voter in the Antelope Valley should vote no for this, because we are never going to get our fair share of it the way it's written, just like we're not going to get our fair share of the initial one that was written, and, but if, you know, if it's just us saying we don't endorse it, I think that goes in people's one ear and out the other. As well it should, I mean, it really should be explaining to them why.
We can provide educational materials regarding the impact it would have, or lack thereof, on the city, and what our research has determined as to what that will be. Advocacy is another matter, so I will work with staff to make sure we stay in compliance with the law.
Okay, thank you. And can we check their ballots before they go in? Never mind.
For educational purposes.
So we're looking for...
Is there a motion?
Call to action.
Yes.
I'll move that we do not support the metro tax.
And we use all the support that the city...
And we use whatever, yeah, again, again, many times I've gone down with Vice Mayor Kristin, when you literally have to cajole, threaten, you know, just to get a small portion of what we should have gotten all along, and then now with 2060, what'd you say, 64?
63.
63. We'll all be dead, so, I mean, that's ridiculous. Going to collect all that cash, stop and think how many years that is in the future before we'll see any money spent. That's just pure literal...
None of it, none of it is spent in the city of Lancaster.
Right.
You know, the reality is, there's LA County, and then there's us, and we are not of them. I mean, they abuse us at every opportunity, and we should never forget that. It's, am I wrong about that? Anybody, anybody have a different experience with how that system works?
No.
I'll second that motion.
And it's unanimous. You thought I was going to go on a rant, didn't you? Okay, CR1, council reports. Any council reports? So, none of you did anything?
No, we had most of our, what we're doing with Thunder on the Lot, the different charities that the city works with, the sheriff's department, and the fair. So, yeah, we did a lot.
Okay, good. I'm just asking, I mean, you know. It's kind of touchy tonight, isn't it?
Well, after they brought all those sheriffs in, you put him on the defensive.
Okay, I don't have any announcements. Oh, city clerk?
City manager.
Oh, city manager. You have any announcements? Any videos, any...
No videos, we're getting a break from the videos, but we have three announcements. Number one...
You're not going to get any better if you don't practice.
We have some very good ones. We want to, you know, leave you expecting it next time.
Okay, good.
LPAC, we're very excited, we'll be announcing another fine season, we'll be announcing that this week. I think sometimes people forget the benefit that that brings to the community, and we hope to show that during the press conference. We've talked a little about Moa, they have a new exhibit opening made in America, and that will be going through mid-October, but what we're really excited about, too, this week is starting to fulfill the council's promise of LCE, that we can start directly benefiting people with jobs and power that will be used locally, so I'm going to ask Jason Cottle to talk about that briefly.
Excuse me. On August 11th at 10:00 AM at the intersection of 105th West and J, we will be breaking ground on a 10-megawatt facility that will be directly serving the citizens of Lancaster with 100% green energy, generated by a local company who's building them locally, with local hands and local workforce, and we're going to be using that energy locally. It's a, it's a milestone, a small one, but it's just the start, and what this means is that this is the first time that we're doing this in a year of operation. As this agency matures, as more revenue and more stability comes in, we're just going to see this continue to expand. The job opportunities, the savings that it results to the customers, I mean, it really is a win-win situation. We're excited to, Thursday, to be breaking this ground.
We own it?
We own it through, for 20 years. We have a PPA, of which we have a purchase option at the end of 20 years, but we will own the power that comes out of that system for 20 years at a flat rate.
What's the rate?
It's low 40s dollars per megawatt hour.
Thank you. Okay, great, wonderful, we're on our way. Good, thank you. Okay, city clerk?
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Let's back up a little bit. Could we, next, well, sometime in the near future, could we get a readout of what LPAC's doing attendance-wise in the last five years? Are we growing, are we losing?
Sure. Absolutely, we have that information, we can give a report next meeting.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, now, Juan Leo?
Good afternoon, good evening, actually, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I was here a couple weeks ago, and, and, well, I was a little nervous, obviously, it was my first time speaking at a city council meeting, I'm still a little nervous now, I'm new to all this. this. It seems I ran out of time last time I was here, and so if I run out of time today, I'd appreciate it if somebody took the time to speak with me after the council meeting is over. And also, I'd like to be able to answer any questions and reply to any comments you may have after the three minutes are over. Like I said last time I was here, I was falsely arrested and maliciously prosecuted by a land cap group home and land cap entities failed to give me, basically, they failed to give me my due process constitutional, my constitutional due process rights. They failed to exercise that for me. I had videotape that proved my innocence of all charges, and Derico here ignored that, Deputy Jordan ignored that, many of the responding deputies on night ignored that. And you promised me that you would let, well, at least you said that you would look into it. I also was here, and I said that I emailed some of the transcript, that was some of the things that were said between Deputy Jordan, that was said to me by Deputy Jordan on behalf of city representatives. He told me he was at my home on behalf of the City of Lancaster, told me that they don't care, they don't want to do anything about it, that's it, there's no more, that I've already made the report, and if I don't like it, to sell my house, because they're not going to enforce any of it. Now, public officials, when you call City Hall and you request for public servants, public officials, to take care of public health and safety issues, and they tell you that, and if they don't do anything about it, I feel that's neglect. But if they tell you they don't care, and they don't want to do about it, and they don't want to do anything about it, that's it, there's no more, sell your house if you don't like it, tough luck, essentially speaking, you don't like it, sell your house. I think that's threading along the line of gross neglect. Doing nothing about it, neglect, I feel. Telling people you don't care about it, it's gross neglect. Now, I believe I also attached on that email, now, I sold my home as a result of that, I mean, and many other items. So, I would really appreciate if City Hall did something to help me recover a lot of the losses that I sustained as a result of that. I was harassed beyond imagination. Deputy, 14 calls, 14 calls for deputy out to my home in a three-month period, a false arrest, two restraining orders. Every case brought against me, every charge against me, dismissed. And then for City Hall telling me they don't care and don't want to do anything about it, when it's a land cap group home that's funded by, that's licensed by the city and funded by the county, I wonder if I'll ever get a fair investigation.
Thank you.
And I'll go ahead and answer any questions or reply to any comments you guys may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I should have this fixed tomorrow. Yes. Good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I want to express my feelings I have for the presentation you had today for Deputy Mitchell Speed, and the reason why I am so strongly for Lancaster, because you do a lot of good work, and a lot of people don't appreciate it, and they don't listen, or they don't open their ears. All the good things that, like the kids charities, the fairs, everything you do, you do for this public, and I want, I want myself to let people know that you are doing a terrific job, and I appreciate it very much. And that's the reason it gives me the opportunity to speak out and say what I have to say. Sometimes, sometimes it's good, sometimes it's not so good. But I needed to say that. Real quick, first of all, August 11th, 105 and J, what time? 10 o'clock?
10:00 AM.
That's 105 West, right? Okay, I have a quick question, though. This was brought to me by one of my people, I got people too. This is in reference to one of the businesses here in Lancaster. It's a restaurant, in fact, it's Pueblo Viejo Restaurant. They were told, and I've got a copy here, that they had to get a license for somebody to play music in their establishment. Is that so? And anyway, I've got the paperwork here. It didn't seem, it didn't seem right, because this was a private, you know, you go up there, I'm not talking about karaoke, you know, like...
Do you want me to answer? I'd have to look at the specific situation which planning could, but if there's other activities beyond the music, for example, alcohol, food service, times of operation, things of that nature, noise, they would. It's probably in conjunction with other changes they want to make, but we'd be happy to look at it.
Okay, can I give you this copy then?
Sure.
I have a copy, and then maybe you can give me...
Sure, in fact, Jocelyn, I think, or Jason can take it and look at it from planning.
And it has who I said, oh, shoot, wait a minute, I didn't get it on my paper. I have the information all on this one. I spoke to Maria, she's the manager, and then owners are Alma and Josefina, and, because they were told they had to pay $1,000 to get this license for a year, but they're not going to get the license, so that means they're not going to have any kind of life, just entertainment for public, but not people that are on the, that are on the contract or in the industry. So, I just, I told them I'd bring it up to you guys, and take it from there, and I hope I can get some answers so I can give it to them.
You know, we regulate nightclubs stringently, because that's where problems develop, that are oftentimes, we can't come back from, you know? So, there's a lot of, a lot of regulation in that, and so they're probably correct. If there's alcohol and music, there's going to be a great deal of regulation. That's just the way it is.
I do want to make sure that this company that says that they have to get a license, they're a reputable company and not a fraudulent situation.
In addition to some of those regulations, this looks like it's a copyright company for somebody who wants to play music from a commercial establishment, very similar you would put a TV in your establishment or music. It's a commercial license to play music in a commercial establishment. This document has nothing to do with the City of Lancaster.
Oh, I see, okay.
Fran.
Oh, I know what that is. Yeah, that's where they charge you. Oh, it's awful.
Yeah, when you put a jukebox in, and you put their music, that I could see, but this is a private individual.
Mayor Paris, I got this letter too. All the restaurants, I think they got all the rest, they have these letters.
I used to have a club back when I was, you know, in my other life, right? 30 years ago, 30 years ago, they were sending me those letters. Don't give those people a dime. I mean, it's, it's...
Okay, good, then, that's what I, that's what I thought that it was.
Okay, good.
So, I thought I'd bring it up to you, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Fran.
And God bless you all.
Thank you, Fran.
Oh, come on, start.
Heather, you ready? Travis, at 2:00, if there's a problem.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, oops. Of course, you know why I'm here, water. It's always water. But I was handed a document in the whole weetery. Apparently, a citizen got the rainwater tested. Now, I've never put much...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Into the...
We are not going to deal with rainwater.
No, 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 I'm just telling you what is in the water. Well, if it's in the rainwater, it's in the soil.
But, but still, Heather...
If it's non-regulated, let me just tell you, if it's not regulated, and the EPA does not regulate anything that is not negavitable, whatever, you can't put a boat on it. They don't, so if, yes, thank you. So, if it's underground, like the underground water aquifers that are going back and forth under Northrop and over there, where the trenches are, where I've like tried to let you know that that was the source of most of the contaminants, it percolates through the trenches.
I want you to know, I've been testing...
I have called them. You wouldn't believe the story they told me.
You're going to love this.
Okay.
We're actually doing thorough testing of different water agencies.
Okay.
And, you know, you might have been...
I would like to see that.
You've had a point this whole time.
See?
Yeah.
Gosh, why do you make me come up here and keep telling you guys this? Anyways, to let you know what the...
I mean, it just, it takes a long time for you to sink into me.
Well, you know, if I was, if I am wrong about the levels of contaminants and what's in the water, I will be the first to apologize, okay? Formally written, whatever, you know, but I would love to have a mass spectrometer, just have a couple of drops of this water to see what's in it.
I'm a believer.
Okay, cool. Then let me know. Can I watch them tested to make sure there's no switching on it? No, I'm kidding. Anyways, I thought you might want to know what is in the water. You don't want to know? It's 100...
Don't insult your friend.
220 times aluminum. I thought you just might want to know. I'm just saying.
But which aquifer? I mean, who's drawing...
Well, no, 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 this is the rainwater. Apparently, there was a citizen that was concerned.
I don't want to know about the rainwater.
Okay, well, if it's in the soil, it's in our water. You know, especially when you got a big bank, I won't say where it is.
Heather, if it's in the ground, if it's in the aquifer...
Right.
Then I'm interested.
Okay.
But, but what comes down through the sky?
You don't think that that absorbs into everything?
I haven't figured out a way to regulate that.
Well, you've got to be kidding me. You don't know how to regulate it? Take it out. It doesn't make the jets fly any better. My dad used to fly jets. Aluminum in the water does not make the jets fly better. It's not like graphite and lock.
Heather, Heather...
In God we trust?
Yeah, if it comes from God, I stay out of it.
I wouldn't trust anybody else. I mean, I trust myself. I know what I see, you know, and it's sad. I just spent 10 grand on repluming my house.
Heather, 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 listen to me.
Okay.
The point of it is, is we are taking you seriously, and we are doing more in-depth testing, and as...
So, when, when you have these results?
Well, I've got the results, but what I've asked for is somebody smarter than me and Mark to explain it to us.
Well...
And as soon as, no, I'm not going to trust you for that.
No, I wasn't saying me. I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a doctorate in chemical or...
Yeah, but we're asking for some, you know, credible scientist...
CLA, maybe?
I don't know where they've got it going, but I'll have that report in a week or two weeks later.
Can I call your office and get it?
Yeah, actually, just call Mark and he'll get it to you.
Okay, all right.
You can release that. I don't have a problem with it.
But you know, there are certain, I mean, certain sections of the town have better water than others, which is really weird to me.
Yeah, I know.
And my, I live in town right off Lancaster Boulevard, and it's scary. I mean...
I'm working on it. You woke us up.
My walk-in closet has now got a huge water tank, reverse osmosis, and carbonated-activated filter. It's huge, because I don't, my water, even my sprinkler water is purified now. So, I'm putting back good water, but if...
Heather, that's pretty paranoid.
No, you know what? What's sad is after 10 days, if your water, if your swamp cooler drips, okay, maybe six hours a night, when I turned it off, the swamp cooler at night, it would drip onto a 1/8 galvanized, yeah, and it went through it in 10 days. It looked like acid, the water that dripped off the hose from the swamp cooler at night when I turned it off. 10 days, really? I don't know.
That sounds like the penny in the coke.
Can you imagine what it could do to your insides?
Heather, you make this job fun. Thank you. Thank you. Be sure to check with Mark, because all kidding aside, we're getting some interesting results. Yeah, make them clean up their mess.
Yeah, it's so easy.
Okay, Pat Murray?
Want to get up and stand?
I don't want to stand, no.
She doesn't have to stand. Quit beating the...
It's going.
There we go. I'm having too much fun.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Change of pace, change of subject. Can you hear me?
I can.
If not, you'll have to let me know. I read a recent article regarding the building of a shelter for the homeless. They quoted 38,000 homeless in the valley, which is frightening, very serious business. The citizens say we have so many empty buildings, we should use those, but they're all scattered around. They're not in unison at all. I will let that fact remain in your mind and get on with my item. I would like you to look at all the army bases, military bases that are empty. It's true, they're all owned by the government, but there's always ways of doing things, and I'm sure you could find a little, little reason to get in there. My name is Pat Murray. I am a veteran of World War II. I am 98 years old, but I still think about the homeless. Now, if you get into these bases, there's many advantages to be had. They have sick bay there, they have movie theaters, they have schools, they have church, they have swimming pools, football fields, baseball fields, rec halls, and a commissary also. All of these things we need in our life. I suggest that we get a committee together to check into the beginning of getting a base. I have a list of bases that I got at the public library, and these bases are in Southern California, just Southern California. There's 70 bases listed here, 70 bases. An endeavor like this could be a godsend for the homeless. It would give them all a job. The men would have to clear the fields. They would plant little gardens, little home gardens, or whole fields of corn, potatoes, tomatoes. It would feed the whole barracks, all of the barracks in the base. The barracks could be divided into apartments to house the home for the family. The children could walk to school, don't need the buses. Everything is fenced in, everybody is safe, and some of these bases have a central kitchen. The women could work in the kitchen, the children could help. There would be horses in the corral, cows to milk, chickens to feed and gather the eggs. It would be a very cozy arrangement for the people. There's plenty of work to be done for everyone, all the, from the father to the mother to the children. Even the small children would have kindergarten, just like out in the life now. This could be a little community. You could socialize with your neighbors, go to church with them, and be friendly. You would have a chance to gain some self-respect by working and supporting your family. It would be a tremendous effort if it could be put into play. So, weigh the advantages of life on the base as against life in a simple... So weigh the advantages of life on, on the base as against life in a simple building that you would find. In a, a regular building, you, the only thing you'd have around would be a big parking lot, whereas on the base, you would have gardens and all kinds of entertainment to do. It would, it could work. It could work. Just give it some thought.
Thank you. That's actually a great idea. It makes a lot of sense.
Sorry, I don't hear. My son will read.
He said that's a good idea.
It is a good idea. I have thought of it. There's many aspects of my military life that I combined in this.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. You're finished.
You, you may have the list of the farmer bases if you would like.
Thank you.
That is all I have to say. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to ask, to try to answer them.
We're good. Thank you.
If you want to see me again, you'll give me the word.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray.
Thank you. Have a nice one.
Now, Cher Gilmore, that's a tough act to follow.
That was just what I was thinking myself. Scary and inspiring.
Could you lean down?
Can I lean down well? I can try.
There we go.
Is that as high as it goes?
When it, when it's working, it works.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right.
You know, as I was listening to her, I was thinking, yeah, but, you know, we're not allowed to have common sense in government, you know?
Sometimes we think that, don't we? Well, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Cher Gilmore. I'm a member of Citizens Climate Lobby. That is an international nonprofit, nonpartisan grassroots organization. We're very concerned about climate change, and our U.S. goal is national legislation for carbon fee and dividend program. The reason we think that's important is because we think it's the fastest and most effective way to reduce the carbon emissions that are overheating our planet. We also know that the ultimate solution has to be national and international because of the scope of the problem. Now, because it'll be easier to pass national legislation if localities support it, our organization is asking for resolutions from cities across the country urging Congress to pass a national carbon fee and dividend program. As you know, Lancaster is already a leader in addressing climate change, so it seems like a natural thing for you to take that next step, and I hope you'll choose to do it. But why would you want to do this, other than the fact that you're already a leader in climate change? Well, first of all, we know the system works. British Columbia has had a very similar revenue-neutral carbon fee for over, well, almost eight years. It's worked very well. Internationally, forty-eight countries already have some form of carbon pricing, and since we are one of the major polluters, I think we have a responsibility to do our part. Secondly, a study by Regional Economic Models, Inc. has shown that our particular plan would effectively reduce emissions, but it would also, in addition to that, create, I think it's 2.8 million jobs over twenty years, and it would also benefit the economy. Thirdly, the plan has been endorsed by leading economists, politicians, and top climate scientists, including former Secretary of State George Shultz, who in fact is on our Board of Advisors, former Treasury Secretary Hank Paulson, and climate scientists Doctors James Hansen, Michael Mann, and Catherine Hayhoe, among many others. Just a few. Finally, based on recent developments on Capitol Hill, we believe bipartisan action on this issue is possible in 2017, if Congress sees that there's local support for it. In the U.S., twenty cities and counties have already endorsed, passed resolutions endorsing carbon fee and dividend, including six in California. And in June, the California Assembly passed Joint Resolution Forty-three, which urges Congress to enact a tax on carbon-based fossil fuels. We don't know if it'll pass the Senate and be signed into law, but we hope it will. Mayor Paris, you endorsed our plan in 2013. I don't know if you remember that.
Hey, I'm not that old.
And we hope Lancaster will add its weight by passing a resolution calling for a national carbon fee and dividend program. And I've given each of you a blue folder with supporting documents on all the points that I've made. Obviously, I can't say very much in three minutes, but there's a lot to be said in support of carbon fee and dividend. Do you have any questions? I can answer really quickly, or can we set up a meeting to talk further about it? What would be the next step?
I, I'd like it on the agenda at the next meeting. If anybody has any questions, they should make sure they have the number to call, Ms. Gilmore, and I think that'd be the most efficacious way to do it, okay?
Okay, great.
And we'll just vote on it next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Unless somebody has some questions now? We're good? Okay. And I'd like my colleagues to remember that George Shultz is a Republican, so, very conservative Republican. Thought I'd start the lobbying effort early. What the heck? Okay, is that it? Any comments from the council? Anything from criminal justice? Anything from planning?
Thought I'd share with you the opportunity that we're taking up next meeting, which is a week from yesterday. We will be considering the revisions and recommendations of the City Council on commercial parking regulations that we've been talking about for some time, and we'll also be, we've started talking about the land use implications on recreational marijuana. However, that's going to be a little longer than the ninety days that the mayor suggested.
Oh, are you lazy? What? Pardon? Oh, are you lazy? What?
It's a very complicated issue, Mayor, and considering that the proposition has, has not come to a vote, nor all the stakeholders who may be in support or in opposition haven't really weighed in on it.
I, I want to, I want to be-
It seems like it's, let me finish, please. It seems like it would be somewhat premature to try to craft a opportunity, whether it's regulations or income generating opportunity, before it's even on the books. However, we are going to spend some time studying it, and we expect to have a recommendation back to you, but I, you know, it's not going to be in the next month. It just, it's not going to happen that quickly. Couple of reasons, you know, there's, there's meeting time, public input, as well as staff time. It's a very complicated issue.
I was here this weekend. I didn't see any staff working.
You saw me working. The other things that we're taking up is, you know, there was a request by a property owner who owns a substantial amount of property, talking about tentative tract map extension, which would be different than our current government code. So we're going to take up that issue and study it. We're also working on the zero net energy issues that you've assigned to us. And last but certainly not least, there's a public safety issue on the Alcohol Ordinance Working Group, which will, which will take, the next meeting will take place latter part of this month with the working group, and they expect to be able to present a recommendation to Criminal Justice and the Planning Commission, which we will then take up in public hearing and make a recommendation to you. That's about it. We're not doing much.
In, in reading the paper, it, it seems that I'm not clear on what my ultimate goal is with the medical marijuana. And so I want to make it clear. I want to suppress retail, meaning I do not want it sold on our city streets if we can avoid it.
You certainly, you and I certainly agree on that.
Okay. The, if it's legal to grow it, and we can benefit from allowing that, and especially indoor and unused buildings that would have a substantial benefit to the city, I want that explored.
And we, we understand that, yes.
Okay. It, I guess what I'm saying is, if there's a benefit without a detriment to it, let's explore those options. All right?
And, you know, and it's, it's, it's multiple issues. Land use and siting and those things are within our purview. The, you know, the regulatory issues as it relates to public safety, you know, we can explore that, but we really don't have the authority, if you will, to make that kind of a recommendation to you. We certainly will, if you'd like us to.
Well, I just want the process started, and there has to be a, a great reliance on staff, and then county agencies, you know? I mean, if, if we proceed down that path, I imagine the fire department wants some involvement in this. I mean, you know, there's a lot of hazard that comes with it that we have to look at. But what I don't want to do is, is just ignore the issue and let it envelope us, all right? Okay?
Very good.
But for my detractors who are out there saying that I want to open up pothouses on Lancaster Boulevard, they're lying, okay? That's not what I want to do. All right. Thank you. Okay, anything else? We all good? The City Council will now move to closed session to discuss closed session items one through eight. Thank you.
Lance Jordan?